Yeah, I need to start getting on. It is four o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the June 16th meeting to order. If we could have a rule call, please?
Mayor, Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
At this time, all of those who are able, if you would please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no awards and proclamations, so that brings us to the citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda. Please be sure to get your name and address for us. And we do have one person. Good.
Norman Mantle, Salina, Kansas. On the issue of the ordinance, standard traffic ordinance that you passed recently, I would assume you seeked legal counsel that would pass the constitutional requirements of it. In other words, if there's a chance that it could be overturned by a constitutional, a federal court, why would you implement something that would be later overturned, declared invalid?
Okay. I guess the question would be, which traffic ordinance was it?
Well, you can't park in somebody's front -- I can't park my vehicle in my front yard.
Oh, okay.
You want me to put it on a gravel? What is the purpose behind that? I can guess that it's because you don't think it's good-looking enough.
I can't speak for the other commissioners. I know since it was a big project of mine, it's numerous. For one, it is unattractive. For two, a lot of our main plumbing lines tend to go from the house usually through the front yards. A lot of people are using the handicap ramps to drive up. Cars that park there tend to dig ruts and things into the yard when it's not improved, and they tend to hold water. And I don't know if you've heard, there's just a new mosquito-borne illness that's now being the CDC's monitoring. It's actually a case in Nebraska. A lot of reasons for public health reasons is probably the biggest reason. It is overall unattractive. I don't know that that's necessarily what the -- I mean, maybe from a personal standpoint, that's what it was. But the biggest thing is having lived or had properties next to houses where they parked those ruts that they leave and the filling with water. It stinks. It's a real health hazard. As to the constitutionality of it, I think probably laws get passed a lot of ordinance or things like that that -- I mean, not being constitutional attorneys up here, I don't know. I think we try and do what we think is best advised by our legal counsel and try and make decisions on that. If there's a challenge and it gets to the level of the Supreme Court, well, then we will all find out that things weren't constitutional. But I think we try and do the best based on the legal counsel that we have to make those decisions. But if there's something there that's unconstitutional, it can be found, obviously, we would adhere to what the Supreme Court would send down to us.
But that is the possibility of it being unconstitutional.
I suppose it is.
Don't do it.
Yeah. Well, no, no, no. We can't base -- we can't do laws based on whether we think they're constitutional. We assume that they are constitutional when we make those decisions. I would assume that that's kind of a -- I mean, we kind of operate under that assumption. If you know something more that it's not, I'm sure we would be interested to hear what that is.
Do you have any legal reason or something you've read?
Yeah. Constitution. You need to get it on the Internet. Research the amendments.
The state constitution?
And federal. Yeah.
And what was the street address that you were concerned about parking in? What is your address?
I'm just raising the issue.
No, I mean, you gave it at the outset. You're asked to give your address.
Well, the standard traffic ordinance, Chapter 38, Article 1, Section 8513 and 8514.
No, I'm just getting at, what is your address? What is your number and street address?
Salina, Kansas.
Well, I mean, what, 1515?
Oh.
12th Street?
7532 Pleasant Hill Road.
7532 Pleasant Hill?
Road.
Is that in the city limits?
It's in the state of Kansas. Doesn't matter. I'm entitled to.
Well, our ordinance only extends out to the city limits.
But I'm raising the question of the constitutionality. Will it pass muster? Why do it?
Well, I guess if you get a ticket from the city of Salina for you parking in your front yard, it probably won't. Because we don't enforce on 7532 Pleasant Hill Road.
But I come to the city.
Well, then, please don't park in anybody else's front yard.
I'm just asking.
Commissioners, maybe I can help you transition through this. First of all, with every ordinance that you get, that's regulatory nature and many other things as well, we do take that through our local legal counsel because the first, the very first priority is to ensure that what we're doing, we don't believe is unconstitutional. And I'll be honest, from what my experience is here with regards to other places and talking with other city managers and so forth, we take a very, very conservative approach to that, which means we're going to err on the side of ensuring constitutionality whenever we can, whenever there's a clear line there. Not everything is a clear line. I can read the Constitution. You can read the Constitution.
Right.
We can read the state. We can read the federal Constitution. Quite honestly, the interpretation is with the courts when they have those cases. So you have to be able to read into the court cases and have a knowledge, a working knowledge of how that process works. That's why we utilize our legal counsel. It's why, as a city manager, I won't read the Constitution to you and tell you it's unconstitutional. I'm not suited to do that, and I wouldn't want to do that. So we're pretty comfortable that front yard, yard parking type restrictions are constitutional. They're fairly common. You see them more probably in university towns where there may be more student parking and multiple, you know, folks living in the same house, that type of thing. It's fairly common. At this point, I don't think we've found any reason to believe that ours would be unconstitutional. I can't say that's 100%, but I can say it's pretty good surety on our part. And that's typically how we like to try to make those decisions. And if we thought that in any way, on the front end, that that was unconstitutional, we wouldn't present it to you.
Yeah. And I mean, it never hurts to bring it -- I mean, surely never hurts to bring it to our attention and question it, I mean, as a citizen, to make sure that it is. I mean, we want to make sure that what we're doing is right. Again, we, based on what our legal counsel says. It does bring up an interesting, or not really an interesting, but something obvious to me, and that is, it seems as though they're back to parking the yard. So if you could remind the police chief to get after those people, since we're on the subject of it, make sure they're taking them. But again, you know, I don't think we sit up here and specifically look for things to be unconstitutional. Do we? We do it thinking that it's probably in the best decision we can make based on what legal -- I don't think any of us have a law degree up here, so we have to kind of refer to our counsel and try and make ordinances that we feel fall into it. It's possible that something we could pass could be questioned down the road and maybe found to be unconstitutional. I suppose that's always a case. I don't know that this one would be, but I mean, I think it's fine that you bring up the question and ask us.
I understand the reason because you'd like to keep a clean community.
Sure. And healthy. Yeah.
Got another comment.
Sure.
To the two ladies on the commission, I'd like to hear from you more. Give your opinion. Speak up. May not do.
Yeah, I think I speak up plenty.
Well, give us some more.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks. Speak up, ladies, please.
Thank you. Anybody else from the community? Well, thank you for coming out again. I always say, I know sometimes it's time of the day, it's hard to get in, so I appreciate you coming in and taking the time to speak with us on that. So, thank you. Moving on now to the -- nothing we have for public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so moving on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of June 9th, 2014. 6.2, Resolution Number 14-7114, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with travelers for the renewal of the city's comprehensive property casualty insurance. Item 6.3, authorize the mayor to sign supplemental agreement number one with H.W. Lochner for engineering design services related to the Ninth Street and Cloud Street intersection improvements, project number 11-2872. Item 6.4, award the wayfinding signs material bid to Creative Sign Design in the amount of $88,537 and the wayfinding signs installation bid to Architectural Graphics in the amount of $91,626, plus provide for a 10% construction contingency for each contract totaling a contingency of $18,016.30 for both contracts.
Is there an item a commissioner would like to remove or amend from the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries 5-0 and moves us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 14-10739, allowing the extension of restaurant dining areas into the public sidewalk within the Lee District area of the C4 Central Business District, allowing the consumption of alcoholic beverages through the approval of a sidewalk café license agreement. Item 7.1A, resolution number 14-7111, providing for the related administrative regulations.
Mr. Gage.
Yes, Mayor. I think the city attorney would like to make a couple comments regarding this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have two apologies to make and a favor to ask.
I like the way this is going. Yeah, I like the way this is going.
This is good.
Maybe three apologies.
In two favors.
The first is to Commissioner Hardy for not communicating better, and the rest is to all of you, to the extent it may or may not have affected you as you looked at the ordinance as it was presented to you. We have the question of capitalization of the, both the Lee District and the Lee District Design Review Board, which is the sort of thing that we're supposed to worry about between our office and the clerk's office. And to try to hone in on the precise point, when the point was raised, I have my resources and was concerned that there is a distinction between reference to the Lee District and then, of course, as we refer in ordinances, or you'll notice in state law, anytime there's reference to boards, even if it might be the city commission, you'll see it in lowercase city commission because it refers not only to the 2014 Salina City Commission, it refers to city commissions in general.
In general.
And I think in the version you saw this time with uppercase capitalization of Lee District when referring just to the Lee District and instead all lowercase Lee District Design Review Board, that was based upon my understanding of the rule and certainly not -- what I didn't do was communicate that as early as I should have, particularly to Commissioner Hardy and to all of you, because it was a little different than what we had discussed when you considered the matter last time. So I do apologize for that, and I think something I should have done a long time ago. Mike Heim is in the reviser of statutes office, and in fact, he's the one that has written and edits the Kansas Handbook on Municipal Law. So he's extremely helpful. He was kind enough to provide me with the guidelines that the reviser of statutes uses, which I think will be helpful as we work with the clerk's office in trying to make sure that the code, particularly as it's ordinances, particularly as they're codified, follow those same guidelines. And I -- there still appears to be some question as to whether "district" shouldn't be capitalized or not. The examples they use, and I won't go through them all, but it leaves it somewhat equivocal. We will try to make sure we determine that, refer to it consistently, and that is why it appeared the way it did. And as I say, if I had it over again, I would have figured out a time that would have been better. I'd anticipated we would talk about it now, and I should have alerted you all earlier to that thought.
It doesn't bother me I didn't get that phone call.
Well, it's important to us, and we need to get it right. And intent was to get it right, but I don't think we did. The, I suppose the request comes before the last apology. In the work on this ordinance, to make a long story short, I think there are some improvements that we need to make, both definitionally and the interrelationship between the design review board process for this purpose and the design review board process for their, what has been their purpose to this point. And that's my responsibility and something frankly I let get ahead of me a little bit in terms of that review from that standpoint. My favor is if you would see fit, it would be helpful, and I'm sure we can clear those up, as well as resolve that capitalization question, if we could have until next Monday to do that. Part of our push, I know that this, you know, this is a matter that we were wanting to get moved on as soon as possible, and again, I take responsibility for possibly this getting a little ahead of us or ahead of me in terms of my input. What, as you know, Jake Peterson of our office assisted, did what he was asked to do, and frankly, it was my review and my input that caused the problem, or the timing of that, that caused the problem. The other apology is to Ms. Hodges. I did not have an opportunity to alert you to that earlier this afternoon, so short of running back there after the meeting started, I thought I'd better --
I'm forgetting.
I thought I'd better sit tight before I owe her another apology. Anyway, not to make light of it, it is important. We want to get it right.
Sure.
It would be helpful if we could have that additional week. And that would be the request that we postpone it to next Monday as a date certain.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. So we just need a single motion on that and just postpone until the date of, what do we have for a date there? That's?
23rd.
23rd?
Yeah, this would be the 23rd.
Do we need to open up that still for the public since it was?
Well, that would certainly be appropriate if there is any public comment.
Yeah. Is there anyone here to comment on this issue at all? This is on the downtown establishment of the open spaces in front? Okay. Seeing none, I bring it back to the commission for action or possible action.
I move we postpone the second reading until, on ordinance number 14-10739 and related resolution number 14-7111 to Monday, June 23rd.
Second.
Motion to second to postpone ordinance number 14-10739 and related resolution number 14-7111 until next Monday, the 23rd. Is that what you said? I'm sorry. 23rd, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, next 23rd. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That is, item is postponed until next Monday.
Item 7.2, resolution number 14-7115, authorizing the city to enter into an economic development services agreement with the International Economic Development Council in conjunction with the Salina Airport Authority.
Mr. Gage, again on this one.
Mayor and Commissioners, last year, you had established a goal in essence of bringing to Salina quality and premier jobs and also a goal, at budget time, about this time last year, of looking at what's the best possible approach and structure to doing that. Since that time, we've had some transition in the Chamber of Commerce with the economic developer at the time. So when all the key stakeholders got together, there was really a determination that it made sense to look at a different approach, maybe a more comprehensive approach to providing economic development services. And the key stakeholders, of course, the city, the Salina Airport Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, and Salina County Board of Commissioners. And so what we're proposing here is utilizing the services of the International Economic Development Corporation, or Council, otherwise known as IEDC, that's located in Washington, DC. The IEDC is Nations Leading Association with regards to economic development matters and professions. They certify professionals. They serve over 4,400 organizations and 25,000 professionals across the country. Their basic goal is to build local and regional economies worldwide. Basically, if there is such, they're as much of an expert on the matter as just about any general organization. The objective is to bring them to town and to work through a community process and create what we'd call a community economic development organization. As you know, we've had a coalition of sorts with the parties for some time. This would really be more of a formal entity and organizational approach to that. We've attached for you the IEDC services agreement. I think you have probably in front of you a updated form with some legal updates. Just to go over some of the basic provisions, they would initially provide some research regarding our current structure, programs, partnerships, outcomes, basically the whole package, history. They would utilize the program information we provide, budget information, staffing, and any other pieces of information we can provide them. Review case studies from other community-based type models that are similar to this, various populations, and try to stay as comparable to ours as possible, although I'm not sure in this that it's all that relevant, and try to apply that information to our community. They would come to town. Would there be a kickoff meeting? There'd be an economic development educational session, public input gathering opportunities, stakeholder interviews, discussions of goals and expectations, discussion of preliminary findings after all of that, over a three-day visit to Salina. It would include a comprehensive review of our community's economic development division, or vision, the mission, roles, funding, and the potential governance structure associated with that. And we would have initially a draft report. They would, of course, solicit feedback on that, from that. And then finally, a final written and oral report with specific recommendations on creating what's in essence the best community economic development organization possible for our region. Our hope we have at this point, the city, we're asking you to be committed to that as a staff. The airport authority has provided commitment. The Chamber of Commerce has provided commitment to that. And representatives from all of those groups will be at the Salina County Board of Commissioners meeting tomorrow afternoon in their informal meeting to discuss and their study session, their participation. We think that's very important. They've always been a key provider, so that kind of formalizes the request for them. So we certainly hope that they can participate with us. The total cost for the services is to be $19,193, broken down by project costs of just under $16,000, and the rest to be travel costs, about $3,200. The site visit is occurred, is expected to occur the week of, I believe, July 14th. Are we still in line with that? Yeah. Looks like that's still what we're shooting for. The payment for services would be on a monthly basis, based on the percentage of work performed. Again, as a fiscal note, we've talked about the total cost, just over $19,000. What we would have here is a co-contract with the Salina Airport Authority, where the city and the airport authority would contract with the IEDC. So technically, our two entities would be responsible for the total cost of $19,193. We do have commitment at this point from the Salina Chamber, Area Chamber of Commerce to fund one-fourth of the total, which would bring both entities down. And if Salina County would participate, we would expect that, they would fund a fourth of it as well. So really, what that means is, is the city's cost would probably not be less than about $4,800 and not more than about $7,200, based on what we know, just to give you an idea. And that's certainly within my purchasing authority, city manager, but we recognize this as a broader policy process than a purchasing decision. With regards to the strategic plan, goal number one says, "The city will create a community of mixed-use quality development redevelopment." And the specific action item that relates to this in the plan indicates that the goal would be to determine the most effective approach to local economic gardening and to retaining, growing, and recruiting quality and premier-level jobs with a focus on higher-level technical knowledge. This agreement provides, we believe, the agreement with IEDC provides the assistance needed to fulfill that strategic planning goal. So we offer you a couple alternatives, obviously, to approve resolution number 14-7115, authorizing the city to enter into an economic development services agreement with the International Economic Development Council in conjunction with the Salina Airport Authority, or two, do not approve resolution number 14-7115 at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Also, we have Tim Rogers with the Salina Airport Authority and Dennis Flauver with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce here, who may be able to answer questions I can't, so.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Any questions for staff on this?
You have a range of money here, $4,800 to $7,200. Would that assume that whether there's three partners or four partners going into this?
Yes.
Situation? Okay. And my other question was, in the resolution, doesn't have a page number, but anyway, all of the names of the persons that are involved in the work group are listed there, and there are two commissioner members as part of that group. My question was that, is there a possibility, in case one of those commissioners cannot attend whatever meeting, that another commissioner would be able to substitute for that person? I understand that we are, you know, as liaison, we can sit in any meeting that we want to, but we may not have necessarily a voice at the table. We might be sitting in the audience section or whatever if we go as a liaison, unless that's not the case.
Commissioner, that's a good question. Let me hit on that real quick. I failed to bring that in. The resolution does provide for that. That's a working group. It's not intended to be a group that provides formal votes, but we did want to make sure to have transparency. So as you mentioned, all those meetings will provide, there will be a public notice, and there'll be minutes and so forth, so anyone from the public can attend those. I spoke with our legal counsel, with Mr. Binkson, on that question, and I believe, I'll look at him, but I believe based on the fact that it's not the typical formal, I'll call it a committee role, it's not really the typical formal committee role, it's truly more of an informal working group role that there could be a substitution. But I think I'll ask it as a question rather than assert it as an answer, and make sure we're on the same page.
Two observations. I would think certainly the reference to particular participants is in anticipation of some consistency, but I don't know of any reason why there wouldn't be the potential for that substitution in the event that one of the other members of the commission could not participate, and that I think would certainly be recognized. And I suppose it's a given, but just to make sure everybody understands, we do view this group as being subject to the open meetings law. So certainly, it will be open and open for participation, whether as a substitute or whether just in your own role or any citizen's role. The basis for that, other than just probably being a good idea, it's, we do have representation from either elected or appointed bodies, and certainly, as you are doing here, some recognition of the role of that group. So we are in an open meetings context with this working group.
How is a working group? How was it determined who was going to be on this working group? Do we know?
Well, if you look at the list, you have a sort of a combination of, you have our SEDIC, which is one of our, one of your advisory committees that's established by the city, the Salina Economic Development Incentives Council. You may recall that not, I think it was in 2010, their role was broadened beyond just grants from the special sales tax and to really involve most aspects of policy and programs and other things related to economic development. So this group represents that entire membership. It also involves membership from the various boards of the four key entities, and then there's a few sprinkled citizens in. And quite honestly, you had some interest, actually, as this process evolved, you had some interest from a lot of those folks who had talked about the process early on, and so really, it kind of sort of stems from that, with the thought of having some continuity as we went along with that.
And then, as far as the organization that it was determined ought to be looking at this change in model, i.e. IEDC, want to make sure I get that right. Was there any other group that was considered that might also serve that function somehow? This IEDC was chosen as, well, this is the group?
There, you know, there was some discussion early on about whether or not it could be facilitated by universities who have a strong focus in economic development. There are some, University of Oklahoma is a good example. They provide a lot of training for economic developers, training in which, if you take that, that the IEDC will recognize for IEDC certification. So they're an example of that. Even Wichita State has some of that in their program. I think in the end, I think the consensus really was that the IEDC is really the central hub of this kind of work, and that they do this very often. They do this exact type of project all the time, and they're really trained up and able to go into, you know, different communities with different makeups, different issues, different levels of agreement and disagreement, and facilitate that. So that's just really what they do, and I feel, I think that the determination was, is they're probably best suited.
And this coalition working group was formed when? Do we know?
That's a good question. I'm not sure I can give you a formal date on that, as far as when preliminary discussions occurred. I would have to look. I would say eight weeks, 10 weeks.
Maybe three months ago, yeah.
Maybe.
And this would be as a result, because we do not currently have, because Beth Shelton, the economic development, certified economic developer, is no longer here?
Yeah, I think that's one factor. Certainly, that's a factor that I believe the airport authority took into consideration. That's one of the factors that we took into consideration. I think from the city side, quite honestly, if you look over even really the last three decades, I think, and if you ask the citizenry, generally speaking, and anecdotally, have you been happy with economic growth in Salina, given our central location and two interstates and so forth? I think a lot of people would anecdotally tell you, "Well, I wish we could do more." And so we typically, from a population perspective, pre-recession, probably grew about 0.4% a year in population. And population's just one factor, keep in mind, there's a lot of other factors. We've always had a pretty low unemployment rate, pretty stable unemployment rate. We haven't seen the peaks and We haven't seen the peaks and valleys that their communities have, pretty strong sales tax base. But from a job and, and really an income perspective, I think, most people say, "Oh, I wish we had more jobs," it's kind of anywhere, but I think in Salina too, more jobs and higher paying jobs. And I think a lot of that and the, and the analysis behind that led to the idea and the concept of quality jobs and premier jobs. And, and those, of course, quality is establishing a standard that says, you know, jobs can come here, there's every, any business that pretty much has a right to be in town, but if we're, if the city and the taxing entities are going to be involved and in any way assist that business, you need to meet minimally a quality job level, and preferably a, you know, that enhanced level of job. And I think the, the premier level, and, and that's really what, what that's about. So I think this is kind of the opportunity, a few things happened, and the opportunity arose where we said, "Can we, can we do it better as a community, working together, than we ever had before?" And I think the consensus was, "Yeah, we think we can, so we need to take a shot and try to do that."
So this, so, you know, I remember we did have the talk last budget cycle about, you know, maybe we, maybe it's time to maybe take a look at the models we're using, and maybe there might be some other more efficient models to use. So I am happy that we're taking a look at some of these models, but I hadn't heard from any coalition or group that they felt like it was time to look for a different model. So I'm pleased that we're going that way. I do think that the way that we have done it in the past has had its problems. I think that, you know, when we talk about premier and quality jobs, one of the things I thought about, one of the items on the agenda earlier was Lochner. And I thought, you know, at one time, we had a pretty big presence with not only Booker and Will, Booker Willis Ratliff, but also Wilson and Company. And they are skeletons now of what they once were, and those were quite, those were the kind of jobs that we're trying to go after now, some of them. Maybe they're a little, little more in the premier, but they're certainly in those types of jobs. And it seems like if we've been doing the same model all along with talking about retention and, and all of those things, it kind of makes me wonder what happened along the lines on some of those. And I'm sure there are different things that go on there, but, but, you know, I do know, it's, it's frustrating. I went back and I looked at the 2008 agreement that was put together, and at that time, the, the contract was two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars for economic development services. And, and I compared that with the 2013 agreement that we had. And maybe I, I'll, I'll just ask you, it didn't seem like there was a whole lot different there, and it looked like there, a whole lot of that hadn't really made a whole lot of progress. Am I missing something on that?
Well, no, probably not. You'll see two different styles of agreement. The, I believe the 2008 was the more general style of general services. The 2012 and 13 agreements were more specific with regards to goals and expectations that way. But generally speaking, I think you really see similar things trying to get to the, to the end of fulfilling those expectations and goals and that type of thing. So there's certainly similarities, there's, the topical areas are very, very similar.
Okay. And then just with the, just with the agreement with the IEDC is, you know, I looked at some of the, just some of the things that they want to look at and get at, and there are certain things that, certain roads I don't want to go down. I mean, I think that if we are going to look at as a community, the best way to do economic development, if we're using these guys to look at an EDO, an economic development organization, then I want to make sure that it's an independent, it's an independent type of board. So I hope we're not spending twenty thousand dollars for this thing to come back and say, "Oh, yeah, it was just fine the way you guys are." And so, I mean, I think, I think it's good, I think we've all recognized that by even pursuing this, the entities, that things aren't working. And so I just hope that we get a really good assessment of where things are, where they need to go, and, and have a real, clear, and honest approach to this thing that makes sure that, that the citizens of Salina are getting everything from this study that we're being promised. And so I, I have a bit, I'm a bit reserved on, on the whole, this whole thing, but I'm supportive of the process. So I think if we can do this in a, in a, in a manner that is transparent, and in a manner that is inclusive of everybody, especially that wants to be involved in that process, then, then I'm behind this thing.
And I, I want to say also that I agree with Commissioner Blanchard in that I'm supportive of, of trying to do some, enter into this agreement and trying to do some more things with economic development. As I look at this list, though, of the working group, I have to say, I see but just two women, I think, maybe three out of nineteen. And I think there are a lot of women in Salina that are probably interested in economic development. And I'd just like to take just that opportunity to say, you know, take a look at who's on these committees. You know, we all have our ideas. It's, it's not just the people that are the movers and shakers. I understand there's movers and shakers, but we need some more women on these committees. And, and it's true of all of our city boards and commissions. I, I really want to encourage women to get out and, and get on board. That's the way you make changes in the community.
They probably heard rumors about our, our other guys not liking women very much in here.
They shy off.
A woman could have my seat on this board if they want to go to the meetings. I'm more than happy to give up mine.
Well, I just, I just want us to, I just want us to look at this, I mean, as I look at this list, that's what pops out at me.
Very good, yeah. Good observation.
And I would, I mean, I would just look at the list, I mean, there are a lot of, I mean, you know, we've got a couple of former-
Lots of good people on the list.
Commissioners on here, and, and, you know, just, I mean, just kind of echo a little bit of what, what Commissioner Blanchard was saying, is that, is unfortunately right or wrong, and there's some good people on this list, a lot of the names are part of what's been kind of been the mechanism all along. And I don't feel like there's a lot of fresh faces on here now. Again, that's not necessarily a negative against anybody on here, but you worry how accurate or how unbiased you're going to get when it's pretty much the same crew, myself included, I guess, to a degree, as, as what's kind of been on this sort of process. Now, obviously, we can't throw that to the wind and have fifteen, eighteen new people on here who know nothing, so you're obviously going to have this. But I just, I just would hope that there is, as Commissioner Blanchard said, more transparency and, and, and we don't end up right back when the same, you know, if all you know is how to do this, the only information you're going to give, the, the only information those people coming to the community are going to get are from us. And if all we know is this, and we regurgitate what we know, that's all they have to go by, we could end up right back where we are. And I, I just hope that we can get some more out-of-the-box thinking and maybe some new approaches to what's really best and not just the same old, you know, "This is all I know, this is how we've always done it," so that's all they can reflect back to us. Because all they're going to do is take our ideas, maybe throw a few things, and give it back to us. That's how the, most of these things work. So I hope it's more than that, but.
Commissioner, as I'll say too, it's clear that there's a consensus that one is transparency and two is, is really taking that open, fresh, new look at the whole approach. And if that's your objective, which it would be, or you wouldn't want to enter into this, then that's my objective as well. What I will say is, is I believe we are to, as a transition point, we're coming out of the, I think, truly the worst recession since the Great Depression, and we're still coming out of that. And we're not at pre-recession levels in a lot of ways. And we, and we may not be for many, many, many years. Most cities won't be, actually. But what it causes you to do is rethink everything and decide, where do you want to be, what do you want your community to look like? And as you know, that's a visioning first. If, if you left town and you came back five years, ten years, twenty years from now, what would you like to see? You know, visually, organizationally, diversity, the income, the economy, all those things? What would you really like to see? And so what this is intended to do is give us the opportunity to think as far outside the boxes we've ever thought, and to try to figure out a way to get to what we would, the community would like to see in, you know, five years, ten years, twenty years down the road. And so I know my objective would be to, to get us there, and I think you have the, the same commitment from a lot of other folks.
I would like to echo too what the other commissioners have alluded to, and that is that, and, and you as well, Mr. Gage, that there are, there are several cities in Salina that have a much better growth rate than point four percent or whatever it is. We, I, I don't know that we've been trying as hard as we can to attract the quality and premium jobs to Kansas as we, as we could. It's something I would like to see. I know that counties west of us are losing population. We're at least holding our own. My thought is, we ought to be able to attract some of those people that are migrating in whatever direction, they might be coming our direction, and somehow snare them off the interstate before they get to Topeka, Lawrence, or Kansas City. And another thing that struck me a little bit, I was at the, when I was at the festival yesterday, someone came up to me and said, "You know, I'm, I just decided to move to Kansas City. I can't find a lot to build on in Kansas, in Salina that's under forty thousand dollars." And I think that might be, I don't know if that's part of it, if it's connected at all, but it's another reason that we're not holding population perhaps. And so it's, I'm all for it, but I, I want, I want us to be in an aggressive mode and not in any, any kind of mode, "Well, you know, we're already doing as much as we can."
I just want to touch on the list a little bit real quick. I'm sorry, Mr. Binkson. The list of people's names that Erin pointed out, you look at any committee in Salina and boards, it's pretty much the same people. There's only forty or fifty people in Salina that actually go out of their way and get on these boards and on these committees. And, and it's not unfortunate, but it is, you'll see the same names over and over again. We need, we need to try to recruit people into these groups and get people on these committees. I've always said we need to get some of these high school kids on board their junior or senior year, especially those that are going to the local colleges. That's, that new marketer might be able to do something like that, work with our high school kids, get some fresh faces and fresh ideas out there.
Well, and I think we need to, you know, hit some of the groups that we don't ordinarily think of as having members that would join. I mean, you know, unless we recruit from the NAACP and some of those folks, we're not going to get people, we're not going to get any different faces.
A lot of people don't necessarily know these are even, they even exist. You know, maybe they need more advertisement and let people know these boards and these committees are out there.
And that's getting to my, pretty much my original question was, how was this board put together? Who, who put together this board? So I assume that it got put together by the people that are on the list. And so it wasn't, nobody was being recruited and so on, but my point about transparency and inclusiveness would, would suggest, since, since there are no women or persons of color or really much on this list of people, that there be an outreach, as Commissioner Shirley had mentioned, that get it out there more. How are we going to get it out there more to people? That we need input from stakeholders, and we need the community involved, not just the same forty-ish.
And Commissioners, part of this group are really more of a, kind of a group that, I guess, had interest in the topic some time ago as it evolved. And then what happened is, is it was then filled in with remaining SEDIC members because we felt that it made sense to bring those folks, just based on their role and based on the resolution that establishes their role.
Some experience along with those.
Yeah, and then you'll see the staff people because we deal with all the operation, operating questions and so forth. But this isn't, this isn't a typical group or committee, and, and you have to keep in mind too, I don't, and I don't disagree with anything you've said, and I think we do need to continue to highly and strongly emphasize diversity in all of our committees, boards throughout, throughout the whole community, not just the cities. But this group's role is a, is, when I say a working group, there are folks that have little pieces of technical knowledge based on their experiences. It's not, it's not intended to be making strong recommendations, formal votes, or anything like your typical committees are. It truly is to bring a piece of this and a piece of this and a piece of that, and to make sure that's not lost. We will rely, though, on, on our leadership and the, and the IEDC's leadership with regards to those other avenues for getting public input. What does the general public think? I want to know what the general public thinks. I want to know what these folks think. I want to know what other people that are business people think. I want to know what other people that are affected by businesses think, people that work, you know, in our community, and I want to know what the general public thinks. And I think that's the trick, is to make sure that the process is that we apply through IEDC, and that they apply, and they're used to applying, help give us some of that information so that you know when you get the input, that you can, you can kind of tell where it comes from and know that it represents our community. So we will, we'll really need to work to make sure that happens.
And, and that's the tricky part, trying to find out what the public really, really wants.
Well, you know, it is. It is, and a lot of the topics are so technical, the public hasn't been trained in those. But on the other hand, you know, general folks can tell you if they want good jobs and what kind of job, they can give you some good information, so we need to know what that is.
Well, and I think a big, a big component of, of the entire economic development effort is how it works with community development. And so I think all of us have had several, I, I think that before our board, we've had a number of things over the past year that have dealt with community development and how we want to strengthen the community. And I think that we've all stepped up, recognizing that that's our responsibility, is to get those policies in place and allow staff and, and the community at large even to implement those plans. And so this is big for me because I, I feel like I want to be responsible for moving forward in an economic development, in economic development as a community. So I want that responsibility. And I just feel like the way that we've been doing it is that we haven't had any sort of mechanism to make sure that things were happening in, in your three-sixty mode with the community development, so that things were working efficiently together. So I hope that this will begin to identify some of those efforts and, and, but that's going to be my key in looking at whether I think this thing is, is going to, whatever model it is, the recommendation comes, is going to be something that, in the end, I would be able to support. But because it could go in a completely different direction, that doesn't support community development. And I just want to make sure that in the end, that that's where we're, that that's where we're heading.
We'll certainly emphasize that. That's, you're absolutely right, there has to be full integration.
Yeah.
Mary, just-
You can say it.
Three-hundred-and-sixty-degree integration.
There we go.
Trademark, yeah.
Two quick points, if I may, before you possibly entertain a motion. The, in case anyone was wondering, you do have a revised version at your place. The changes are relatively simple, but some of you might want to be aware of. If you look to Section Two, you'll see the identification of Exhibit A, and then the components of Exhibit A, which is the proposal that IEDC had presented. You'll see what is an added element, plan of action and milestones, that is attached as the last page on Exhibit A. That enabled us, and that was, IEDC was good enough to make that available to us this morning, which enabled us also to, there in Section Four, where we refer to the schedule, where we previously had tried to refer specifically to certain items, we now simply make reference to that schedule as determining the project schedule in general. So that, that's the essence of any substantive modification from what was available at the time of your packet. The other point, if I may, I want to be sure that everyone understands, we've heard reference to this working group being regarded as subject to the open meetings law, and we've also referred to it as having existed for several weeks.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that anybody that might be wondering about that would understand that the origins of the discussion, as you can probably see from the makeup of the group, did evolve from subgroups of persons in roles, whether it be the city commission, whether it be the airport authority, different groups made up of either elected or appointed officials, that at the time of their initial discussion, there was no sanctioned participation by those larger boards from which they came. And that was, I think, appropriate and something that they were watchful for so as not to create an open meetings problem. They were good enough- They were good enough to alert us, and there was some recognition at one point that there was the participation by a majority of the SEDIC members, which caused us to have to be sure that the group did not discuss subject matter, which was that under the outline of the role of SEDIC. And they were careful about that for about the one meeting, I think that was of concern. But now, as we advance to the sort of recognition that this body and others are now giving that working group as it will carry out this designated function, I advise them that, in my opinion, under Kansas law, that which was not subject to the open meetings law now becomes subject to the open meetings law. And they, everyone was receptive to that and certainly recognized, again, that it wasn't, I think they both thought it was a good idea, but recognized that the evolution of that working group has come to the point now where it is subject to the open meetings law. So that's why it evolved and comes to this point and would be viewed as being subject to the act, basically from this point forward, where you are sanctioning, if you will, the work of that group.
One more thing regarding that group, and that is, is that we do have the list here of the group. However, it doesn't, it just lists names. It doesn't identify what organization they're representing. So can we get the, can we get a list that includes the group that they're representing on this?
Are they necessarily representing a group?
Well, I think it would be helpful if, that way, if we have entities that are involved and this working group is based on some sort of membership in an entity, it'd be kind of nice to know what those entities are.
Yeah, Commissioners, that's a good question. Most of these, you can simply tell because they have an official role with, whether it be the city or the chamber, Slayne County or the airport authority. There's a small handful, though, that may or may not lean towards one group or the other, but quite honestly, one of the reasons I didn't want to put that in is because I didn't want to make an assertion that might not be true and consider them officially representing a particular entity. While they may or may not be, I just didn't want to be inaccurate with that. So I felt it was better not to even go there because once you do one or two, you've got to go through them all, and I wasn't sure I could put the answer on all of them. But I mean, I can kind of tell you, maybe to a degree, on most of them, if you'd like to know that. It's up to you if you'd like me to go through. And I'd look back to probably Dennis and Tim if I'm mistaken, but certainly you have Dale Heisel, Clark Renfro, and Frank Hampton are representing the chamber. Dennis Law are representing the chamber. Jeff Mays, the airport authority. Darren Newshaffer, kind of transitioning away, but the airport authority, I would say. Tracy Mann, arguably the airport authority, but really in another way also just general real estate type, commercial real estate. Tim Rogers, we know he's with the airport authority, no question about that. Steve Ryan and Pete Runegard, really kind of former commissioners, mayors, and community interest folks. I'm not sure that they technically represent any particular group. I would say they're probably more of that large, sort of that historical perspective. Pat Beatty, I'm not really sure which, how that, you know, whether he's representing a particular group or not. Pat's involved with a lot of community issues as well, just as community interest. Erin Householder, that's one you have to decide for yourself.
Yeah.
Of course, we have Barb-
He's there for the coffee.
And then me, representing the city. Clearly, we have Randy Duncan, and that presumes, and Rita Deister presuming that Slayne County participates, which we really hope that they will. They would be certainly Slayne County. Mike Hoppick, I believe, would be airport authority. And Lloyd Davidson and Verna Fitzsimmons are probably more, they fill in from the SEDIC. So they probably have more of a community perspective, but they were brought in based on their, they may not even know that yet. They were brought in or listed here based on their role with the SEDIC, which is a city committee. But I wouldn't go as far as to say that they have to feel like that there's, you know, they're locked into that, or can certainly take a community interest there as well. So hopefully that helps you.
Looks like a good group to me, just.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see it more diverse, but then I think they all understand and have worked with economic development.
Yeah, they're definitely engaged community members, but we've got, like I think maybe Commissioner Shirley or Hardy had said, we've just got to, and I think you've definitely said in former meetings, that we've got to expand that group away from the same 40 or 50 people, not, you know, not giving any negatives to any of these people. They've all done great jobs in their respective roles, but we've got to get that expanded.
Yeah, we've got to get more people on board.
Mm-hmm.
More interest in the community. Develop our community.
Who knew 20,000 could develop so much conversation? Yeah. We spent $7 million last week and spent 1/100th the amount of time on that.
I'll tell you what, though. We have spent, and maybe someone with a calculator ready can pull out their calculator, but since 2008, we've spent-
Several million.
256,000, 256,000, 206, I believe. I'm going off memory here. I can't find that. 206, 206, 185, 186, 175. We've spent over $1 million, probably a million and a half over the last number of years. And I am trying hard to find items that are on the original to-do list that have had significant knockout, things knocked out on it, and particularly geared towards quality and premium wage jobs. So, I mean, I know it's 20,000 on this, but this is a big issue that we really need to get under control.
Commissioners, I kind of throw a little bit editorial in. We could easily say this is the job of the private sector, to strengthen the private sector and not spend a dollar. And there are people in our community that would tell you that's the proper thing to do, and I don't know that you could disagree. It's a value judgment, it's an ideological judgment, it's a lot of those things. My perspective is, is usually, well, government should step in when, one, we believe we're not hitting the milestones that we need to hit. The outcomes are not what we think that they are or should be. And, two, we believe we can actually make a difference and do something about it and actually have different outcomes. If we can't meet either of those two criteria, we really shouldn't be putting a dollar into this. And so I totally agree with you, Commissioner Blanchard, and I think the goal of this is to figure out a way to do that, to make us better, better, faster, stronger, kind of go back to the $6 million man, little age thing there. But that's what we want to be as a community as a whole. And it will take the full-fledged objective and dedicated effort of all of those core entities, as well as a lot of entities we haven't talked about that are part of, they're really community partners in many other ways. Education is a good example of that, along the way to help us out. It's going to take all of those folks to help us do that, and that's really what we're going to try to do.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this?
I'm hearing mixed messages here, Norman E. Mantle. I live outside the city limits. So now, if we're going to entertain outside views, I guess my views are contained inside the city limits. Am I hearing two messages?
Well, when it comes to, I'm guessing, when it comes to city ordinances, we're probably, that's where, I think we were focusing there, but I think this is a different kind of approach.
No, no, no. You're not getting other views from other people, whether it's inside the city limits or outside the city limits. So you're restricting comments, views, that may be to your advantage, only to a certain circle of people. Now, I'm getting two messages here.
Well, I think in this instance, where we're kind of on a fact-finding, I think we're probably, this new IEDC group probably, I didn't look in there and see if there is some, they're probably going to look at the community and there may be some public discussions. I don't know that was included in part of this without looking on. I mean, I think it's-
I don't know where all these folks live. Some of them I do know that live outside the city limits. So you're correct. It's from a geographic perspective, it's a little broader, which is, is what it should be because we're talking about Slayne County. And who knows? We may be talking about even our adjacent counties, the rural counties around us in our region, before we're done.
Right.
But we haven't gotten that, we haven't really gotten that stage yet.
Yeah, so I definitely think we're looking at input from all the way around on this one.
Well, I think the city manager answered my question, that we need input from all people.
Yeah.
Not just restrict it to the city.
Right.
Because you are part of the county.
Yeah, I think we all kind of said that same thing up here. I think we were saying, we think the board should be more diverse and include more people.
I was questioning on where I live.
Yeah.
So I have no say?
We always have a say.
If you're referring to before, I was just asking that your, what your address was.
But you said, "City government does not have any input from county residents." That's how I see it.
What I stated was that the ordinance only extends out to the city limits, so you would not be bound by the city ordinance because you did not live in the city.
That's confusing.
I'm sorry.
You're not wanting everybody's opinion, no matter where they live? I mean, that's my view.
I think that we clearly have, and I'll just reiterate from the list, that there is county representation on this list, from county-
County residents, yeah.
County government.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other public comment on this at all? No? Okay, I'll bring it back for any further discussion, possible action.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 14-7115, authorizing the city to enter into an Economic Development Services Agreement with the International Economic Development Council, or IEDC, in conjunction with the Salina Airport Authority, SAA.
Second.
Motion in a quick second.
SAA in there.
Any further discussion on that? Anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. I think that takes us to other business. Was there any other business?
I have one real quick thing on other business. I don't know if everyone remembers, but last January of 2013, the Salina Journal had done a article on the city of Salina, had more job growth in the past 18 months than they had in 12 years. I think it was 12 years. So I just want to touch on that a little bit because I remember talking about it quite a bit when it happened, and just wanted to bring it back in the light that there has been job growth. And it was talking very positive light about the great job growth we'd had over 18 months. I don't know where we're at from January of 2013 to where we are right now. That'd be kind of interesting to see, but I didn't want to throw that out there.
Did it happen to mention if those were the quality and premier jobs?
I don't remember the exact, I don't remember word for word the article, but-
Service-oriented jobs, possibly.
Yeah, I think they were service-oriented.
I had just a quick-
I think that's following the CASA project, too.
And I don't mean to put staff on the spot, but we had a number of promotions at the police department that had to do with some action we took recently on some of the structure of the organization that allows for more captains and the deputy police chief. I don't know if you had the names of the, we have the names, I'm not, just not sure what all the promotions are, but I would just like to say that I'm really pleased that we are taking the steps at the police department to offer more incentive for career-minded people to see that they have a career path that they can kind of grow with the department with and expand their own personal career. So I'd like to just reach out to the chief and thank him for getting that structure in place. Congratulate these individuals for their promotions. They did it at 2:00 and we had a study session at 2:00. So I just, I know probably all of us would have been there if it hadn't have been a conflict.
Yeah, I would, I wanted to.
So, because I know, and I know the chief appreciates the support he gets from his commission, and just wanted to recognize that, if you have those.
Yeah, I don't have the names. It was the deputy chief and my counter-sergeant promotions. There's a handful of about six or eight folks, and I think one of the things we're able to do now, as with a new chief, and we look at our department, is to fill in, like you say, and it's helpful for career growth, and career growth helps us to keep continuity, but it also helps our organization because we're able to elevate folks and use them in a different way than we've been able to use them before and bring them from a, I mean, their jobs, they have to think and do a lot, but we're able to use them to think even more as we elevate them in those higher responsibility-type positions. And so we're actually very happy to be able to do that and be able to fit that in in a pretty cost-effective way. I think between now and then, and the next time we have promotions, we'll work on a scheduling more because I think by the time they realize there was a conflict, it was out and too many people were already coming. So I would have liked to have been there as well to see that. We hadn't had that happen very often in the past, and it's sort of a nice thing to have. So we'll try to make that work better next time. Appreciate the thoughts.
Then, any other?
I had one other comment, too. I know we have a fresh new River Festival under our belts now. And I just wanted to throw out a big thank you to all the city departments that were, that helped make the River Festival possible. Arts and Humanities, of course, spearheads it, but General Services is involved, Park and Rec, and then a host of volunteers. It's the best of Salina coming together for one great weekend. I call it our big block party. And I think it was a huge success, and I applaud everyone's effort to make that happen.
The weather was great. A little windy on Saturday, but that was all right. Only blew me all the way up to Lynn, Kansas, so I had to miss the Saturday evening festivities. But we had, we definitely had fun and good weather overall. Anyone else?
I move we recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the legal council matters, subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at 5:25.
Why don't we say 5:30 and take a small-
5:30. That's good.
Second.
A motion, a second, to convene the executive session for, I'm sorry, the time was 20 minutes, was that correct? For 20 minutes after a short break and reconvene at 5:30. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're in executive session after that short break.
... march ahead. Over the weekend, they launched a bloody takeover of an ethnically and religiously mixed city, Tal Afar, near the Syrian border. In Pierre's Le La Fatale reports, ISIS is introducing itself with a mix of makeshift public services and mass execution.